So it's moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Stroud. There are four reports from the municipal heritage.
Anyone like either of them separated? Casing none, we'll vote on them as a whole. Item one is a notice of intention to designate 305 323 Rito Street. Item two is a notice of intention designate volunteers 426 436 Princess Street. We'll call the vote. And that carries. We have three information reports. The first is tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of November 2014. Any questions? Number two, 2014 priority status matrix. And number three, integrity commissioner update on RFP process. Questions?
I believe it's on for CAO, so I believe that we're in a place to go forward on this file. I appreciate the assistance. Thank you.
Are there any questions on this report? Okay. Okay. There are no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business. We need a motion, first of all, that the resignation of Emily Marshall from the Museum and Collections Advisory Committee be accepted with regret. Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Ossanik. That carries. Onto new motions. We have four of them. First is an offer fewer options for alternate routes to connect to the city on these routes, increasing the active modes of transportation and opportunities in Kingston's Rural Area Transportation Policies Committee.
Thank you. It advised me that it could be a problematic reporting structure to have two committees here, and I'm going to get, ask for a friendly amendment to just report to EITP at this point and chance to comment on it.
Mr. Clerk, is that an exception?
I want to say that about our whole city, there's two stop signs there instead of looking at, sort of anticipating Kingston as they.
...our budget necessarily been the, in the vocabulary that they would like opportunity to, to be able to.
And that carries. King's University organized an annual $500 be waived.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This came and one critically supporting organization, and I know this is the time, because it benefits Hockey for the Homeless, our youth homeless shelter, and it benefits the organizers from Queens who have a wonderful event. So I hope that this, this passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchinson.
Not to be too technical, but in the resolve clause, right, the clerk would tell me. It says a donation of these fees be accepted. Do we have to say from whom, since it's a resolve clause that most matters here? Are we fine there?
I think we're fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick question for staff. The motion says approximately $4,500, and I believe that we saw a more precise amount in the delegation. Do we need to be that precise in the motion, or can we leave it as is? Commissioner Hurdle.
Mr. Mayor, it can be left as is. We do have the information in terms of the exact amount, and we would work with the organization.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I agree with councillor Neil. Normally, I would not be keen to waive fees for Invista because, in effect, that would make its bottom line look worse. So I have a question for staff. In effect, the $4,500 for Pro Kids, when it is used up, it's used, say, at the Invista or at the Memorial Centre, so it actually winds up feeding back into the arena's budgets and that sort of thing?
Mr. Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Pro Kids doesn't quite work that way the Sparks Program does, where it actually helps to provide funding for municipal recreational program. Pro Kids is actually used to enable kids to access sports with other organizations and also purchase equipment or pay for transport, those kinds of things. So it would go into the form of, of contribution either to other organizations or to purchased equipment.
Okay. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I'm supporting this motion because I thought it was an excellent presentation by two of the nicest hockey players I've ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll call the vote. And that carries. Moved by Deputy Mayor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren. Whereas the City of Kingston values and encourages new residents of Kingston and appreciates their involvement in our community, and whereas our current committee bylaw precludes them from joining city committees, therefore be resolved that city staff be requested to bring a report to the Administrative Policies Committee no later than the end of Q2 to amend the bylaw to include all permanent residents who have resided in Kingston for at least one year as eligible for appointment to city committees, with the intent to allow for such eligibility for the 2015-2016 appointments. Deputy Mayor Neil.
Thank you very much. Yes, this motion came in part out of the, a mini-conference that we all attended, I believe you were there, and on a diversity conference, and talking and seeing how keen some of those people were at that, that event. It just made perfect sense that we should, in fact, allow them to be engaged in the community. They work in the community, they raise their families in the community, they pay taxes in the community, and if they have a particular skill set that can help a municipal committee, I don't know why we would not embrace that idea. The other thing is, we've heard from various sources, whether it be CADCO or what led to our, our, I believe it was in 2010 when we brought forward a report on trying to encourage immigration in Kingston, and we've seen that that is going to be vital for the growth and success of our city, why we wouldn't find ways to acknowledge, embrace, and support that. Now, I know there have been a couple of councillors that asked about the one-year eligibility. I hummed and hawed about that honestly for a little while, but I think, I think the reality is, those six of us that sat last night through a very long meeting of the nominations committee know that we take into account what the various skill sets of all of the applicants are. And so, so allowing any resident of Kingston, as I say, who may be raising a family, who's paying taxes, who's active in the community and have a particular skill set, we shouldn't preclude them from an opportunity to serve on, on committees. It increases the pool of potential expertise and potential people in the community that we can embrace. And not all communities do this, some do, but I think it gives a clear message to new people who are about to become new Canadians, who are new residents and are permanent residents in Canada, that Kingston welcomes them. So I sincerely hope that this passes and we give a strong message to that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I have, I will be supporting this, this motion, and I thank you, Deputy Mayor Neil, for, for bringing it forward, and I look forward to seeing it at the Administrative Policies Committee, where I sit. I do have a couple of questions for staff. First of all, is there any legal impediment to, to this? I don't question the motive of the motion, but whether it's actually legally, there's any legal, because I know that, for example, for the voting motion, there, there's actually laws in place that prohibit permanent residents from voting. I'm wondering if there's any such thing provincially perhaps that might be an impediment here.
Ms. Nicholson.
Through you, your worship. I would have to research that question, to be honest, in terms of understanding the nature of permanent residency as it relates to any provincial application. I'm not aware of any, anything at a municipal level, however, that is an issue.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. We anticipated that question, so we did some benchmarking, and it varies throughout the province. Some require the, the eligibility similar to what we have currently in our committee bylaw, others don't, and they look at the diversification of the community. So where I can't speak about the legal aspect of it, but practically speaking, it varies throughout the province.
I guess we'll have more time to discuss that in committee. The other question I had was regarding the one-year limit. How, I don't know which member of staff to direct this to, Mr. Mayor, but how would we determine such eligibility? Would it be a volunteer basis from the applicant, or would be proof of address, or how would we do that?
Mr. Clerk.
Through you, your worship. We would amend our application form to require them to check off that they do meet that particular qualification, and they would sign off on that as well.
So it would be a self-identifying eligibility requirement. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I'm delighted to speak in favor of this motion. The delegation did a wonderful job, I thought, of discussing the, the experience of participating in a committee and how that benefits them, and also just looking at the mutual benefit, the benefits that are enjoyed by the city as well when we get that range of experience. Councillor Neil also touched on the fact that it's, that there are many other areas of municipal life that permanent residents take part in and contribute, ways that they can contribute. So this is, this makes things fair, in a sense, more fair than they have been, and that's a reason why I feel very strongly that we should, should support it. I'd like to also just further address the issue of best practices of policymaking and good governance, which I think is inherent in this motion. A friend of mine always asks, who's not at the table? I think it's very important for us, as we sit in committees, to ask ourselves those questions, regardless of the participation, the makeup that we have before us, to ask what ways we can improve the dynamics of our discussion, what ways we can be more representative. And the reality of that is, the more that we are including a range of voices, the more that we improve, those voices inform policy, therefore we have better policy, and we create greater levels of engagement, which will address what has become a bit of a deficit in terms of our democratic system. So for all of those bigger, broader picture reasons, I'm very thrilled to be supporting this motion, and I think we, we as a city will benefit from the expertise, but also will benefit in terms of doing something about our 40% voter turnout. That's, that's a bigger term objective, but I think it's addressed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we'll call the question. And that carries. Moved by Deputy Mayor Neil, seconded by councillor Holland. Whereas the Ontario Provincial Government is now considering municipal electoral reform, proposing preferential balloting, which our previous Kingston City Council endorsed unanimously. Whereas permanent residents are valued and active participants in our communities, civically engaged in participating in our municipalities, and whereas many democracies around the world have lowered the voting age to 16, which has further increased electoral participation, and whereas during the provincial electoral review, there is an excellent opportunity to expand the electoral franchise in municipal elections, therefore be resolved that the City of Kingston reaffirms its support. Oh, hold on.
Thank you. You just saved me a point.
Therefore, thank you. Therefore be resolved that the City of Kingston expresses its support for preferential balloting in Ontario municipal elections, and that the City of Kingston encourages the province of Ontario to consider expanding the rights of permanent residents to vote in Ontario municipal elections, and that the province of Ontario also considers granting, also consider granting election rights to those who are 16 years old or older, and that the copies of this motion be sent to the Ontario's Premier's Office, the leaders of both opposition parties, AMO, FCM, and all Ontario municipalities over 30,000 residents. Deputy Mayor Neil.
Thank you very much. The reason this is separated from the first clause is that indeed, having consulted with the clerk and looked at the municipal act, we are empowered to do the first, the motion that we just passed. What this is doing is it's asking the province to consider this somewhat array of things that, while they're going through their process of municipal election reform, which they have already spoken to in announcing that they would look at the possibility of having preferential balloting for municipal elections, which is the first step towards a, a, a juster way of, of conducting elections. It's, so it's not a huge step, but something of a step away from first, first past the post. So I think it's a more equitable system. So that's the first clause. Now, I'm intentionally knowing that I was going down a, an array of probably more and more, I don't want to say contentious, but debatable clauses. I've done these so that they're separate resolve clauses, so if someone wishes to separate them, I believe the clerks and the chair would allow that. But having said that, we aren't saying that, that each and every one of us, or each and every citizen in Kingston favors these. We're asking that in the public deliberations of municipal election reform, that the province, at the very least, consider these as potential options. It's totally outside of our power and purview to do these things, but if they're going through a process of municipal electoral reform, it, it would make sense to me that they would consider some of these options. Other, other jurisdictions, both in, in North America and throughout the world, have adopted some of these. During the Scottish vote about potentially becoming independent, 16-year-olds were granted the vote. There weren't enough of them to become independent, but, but they were granted that vote. And so, so each and every one of these, I think, is at least worthy of public discussion, and at least worthy of the province doing a consideration of these. I would like to point out that the province was very, very careful to point out that their idea of preferential balloting, it sounds like they would be giving municipalities, in their first blush kind of explanation, that they were going to give municipalities the ability to choose. So again, it's, we aren't necessarily saying Kingston's going to do all of these things. We're saying, asking the province to consider these as they're going through their process. So again, I hope we're able to support this. We've been a very unanimous group tonight. I'm sure there'll be a motion at some point in time that I've probably written that we won't be so unanimous, but I would really appreciate if, if we could support this direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. I have three fairly distinct propositions here. I will say that, start off by saying that I support the preferential, preferential balloting in Ontario municipal elections. As an incumbent, this won't help me, but it's important to do the right thing sometimes. It's quite possible somebody could second and third their way right by you. So I expect that in most elections, it will just reaffirm the result, but if people are getting a fairly large percentage of the vote. But in the close ones, it could be all the difference. And the really important thing about preferential balloting is that hopefully it will bring about a situation where 50, more than 50% of the people have indicated who they want, and so you'll have a clearer notion of the support that each of the winning candidate gets and, and has received. So I think that's an important principle, and also might encourage people to take part in elections, because they would realize, think, well, my candidate might come close, but they'll probably lose. Well, if I vote and I do preferential balloting, they might come through. So it, it'll certainly make it more interesting, think about it that way. Can you imagine the reporting on election night? Poor clerk's office. Anyway, but I'm sure they're up to the challenge. So the second one, the City of Kingston encourages, consider results of permanent residents to vote. I had some trouble with that one, because I think citizenship is something to be treasured and highly valued, and part of that is voting in a democratic society, and an important part of it. However, it's not the vote completely, it's the vote in municipal elections, and we heard a number of arguments in the previous motion, and we've heard it before, if we've been listening to, you know, people involved with immigration and immigration and so on. The, that, this is about being in, being in the community, not just paying taxes, which is kind of formalistic, but, but being part of the community cohesion, its connectivity, its identity, and identifying people and being welcoming, and we need that. We are the lower portion of immigrants than the norm for similar-sized cities, and that's regrettable in a large number of ways, culturally, socially, but very importantly, economically, as we've identified a number of times around this horseshoe prior to this council. And I think that's important, if we, if the first motion we just passed encourages people to feel part of the community, this will do the same. And I think that citizenship will still be valued. There's issues there, but this is at the municipal level where we all are, and where we can actually meet the people and live with them and work with them, play with them. I think it's important to be integrating people. Then now, on the, oh, one thing I want to have somebody address, the mover might be able to do this when they comment, or someone else. We have a residency requirement in the first clause, the first motion that we just passed. We do not have a residency requirement in, in the second preferential clause, and I think that's something that needs to be considered. Otherwise, I don't know, busloads, boatloads. I just don't think that's going to work. So again, Nockley might take over, you know? I'm not sure we want that. So anyway, now, the, for the election rates for those who are 16 years or older, okay, so I made it, I suggested that I.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds? Okay. I said I would support this years ago when I ran as a federal candidate, so I can't get away from that. It's also a way of transitioning people, young people to adulthood, like we do with the transit passes. You know, we get them using the transit, hopefully that will carry on, it's been shown to work. This might do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you can speak last, if there's nobody else who wishes to speak. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just one quick, and I believe it'll be a friendly amendment. When I first drafted this, there's, the proposed in the addits had dropped the clause which our previous Kingston City Council endorsed unanimously. I was having a senior's moment memory lapse when I said that, so we omitted that on the version on the addits. If we need a friendly amendment, I'm looking to my secondor to redeem me here, to omit that. It was indeed omitted in the addits, which is the motion I think that we meant to have on the floor.
Okay, so just so I understand, so on the addits, what you want to do is, you want to remove the first whereas clause?
No, I'm sorry. Just the last clause that isn't on the addits, but is on the original motion here. So if, if you wanted to ask the clerks, are we dealing with what is on the addits, regardless of what was.
So what's on the screen right now? Is that?
Yes.
That's what's before us?
Yes, that's what we want. So I may not need any amendment.
Through you, your worship, that's not actually correct. The first paragraph, which reads, whereas the Ontario Provincial Government is now considering municipal election reform, proposing preferential voting, the wording following that would be deleted, which says, which our previous city council endorsed unanimously. That wording, if it comes through as a friendly amendment, is something that will be deleted. And then the first therefore clause, initially it talked of reaffirming council support, and that's been amended to read expresses its support for the preferential balloting.
Thank you very much. That was my intent, having spoken to the clerks earlier. So if, so I do indeed need a friendly amendment, and I'm looking to councillor Holland to be friendly.
Councillor Holland.
Thank you. Just very briefly, to the previous point, the reason why I didn't put the, that kind of residency criteria in this motion, that's in the first motion, is that I would assume that the province, when, if, if they adopted this as municipal election policy. when, if they adopted this as municipal election policy, would indeed set up that criteria. It's not within our power to do so. If we wanted to give the provincial government more direction, anybody's welcome to move an amendment to that. But recognizing that, I'm sure the province would establish some kind of a residency criteria, I've just kind of left it up to the province. All we're doing is asking them to consider it through their public process and committee work.
Thank you. So we will call the question. And that carries. We have notices of motion. Deputy Mayor Neal.
Yes, I have a notice of motion that I submitted.
Do you want to read it or do you want me to read it?
If you want to read it, go ahead.
So notice of motion moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Councillor George. Whereas only once has the City of Kingston engaged an integrity commissioner at a cost of the taxpayers of $53,000, which produced no recommended action. And whereas our previous council approved the hiring of an integrity commissioner on an annual retainer, and whereas an initial RFP failed to find a suitable applicant. And whereas the municipal act empowers municipal councils by motion and with due process to recommend the hiring of such a commissioner when and if needed. Therefore be it resolved that the City of Kingston not hire an integrity commissioner on retainer, and that any current RFP process to do so be canceled. Are there any other notices of motion? Okay, seeing none. Minutes? Mr. Clerk?
So it's moved by Councillor 15D03, held Tuesday, December 16, 2015. And the minutes of City Council meeting, number 2015D04, held Tuesday, January 6, 2015, be confirmed.
Please vote. And that carries. I have a number of documents, a number of communications, any other business? So just a note that we're going to move back into closed session, but then we're going to have to come back in here to confirm bylaws. Mr. Clerk, do we need a motion then to move back into committee of the whole closed session?
True, Your Worship, we do. We'll post it up momentarily.
So, great. So can I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Allen, seconded by Councillor Bohm.
The council resolved itself into committee of the whole closed meeting to complete the agenda.
Please vote.